Excuse me, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting, December 17, 2018. Please join Vice Mayor Campbell and the Pledge Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow as we pray. Dear Lord, we are thankful for this day you have given us, for the blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duty, and for each day's problems. As we gather here, we pray that we are ever mindful of the responsibilities we have to our fellow citizens, as we deliberate the business of the city before us this evening. We pray for protection of our military, our police, our firefighters, and their families. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are all present this evening, so we have no communications. So now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Does anyone in the audience want to speak? Then, the next item on the agenda is approval of the Consent Agenda. I understand that Item 6.2 is being removed administratively from the agenda. Will the City Clerk please read Consent Agenda, Item 6.1 and 6.3 through 6.8 by title only?
6.1, Approval of Minutes. 6.2, Removed administratively. 6.3, Approve an Expenditure for the Wells Fargo Force Main and Litchfield Road Projects Change Order. 6.4, Approve the Final Plat for Pebble Creek Phase II Unit 49A. 6.5, Approve the Map of Dedication for APS Bullard Substation. 6.6, Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1922, authorizing the City Manager or Designee to execute all documents necessary to enter into the Emergency Base Station Agreement between Banner Health and City of Goodyear, serving as an Advanced Life Support ALS Base Medical Facility for the Fire Department. 6.7, Approve the Replat for PV 303 East, Phase A Lot 3B. 6.8, Approve the Replat for PV 303 East, Phase A Lot 5.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? All right, then, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second. I heard a motion by Vice Mayor, but just let me finish it. To approve the Items 6.1 and 6.3 through 6.8 on the Consent Agenda. I heard Vice Mayor make the motion. Who made the second? Councilman Hampton. All right, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pozillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Well, let's get to the business. I'd like to remind council to wait until there's a motion on the table for any questions or discussion. The first item is 7.1, is a public hearing to consider the rezoning from an agriculture urban to a light industrial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and Steve Carecchia, Planner 3, to present. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. We have a rezoning before you tonight.
Steve, could you put that microphone up a little louder? Can you move it up to you, because we can't hear? Thank you.
Is that better?
That's great.
This is the property we're looking at tonight, about 114 acres, zoned agricultural urban, Bullard Avenue, Yuma Road. Surrounding this property, we have some industrial warehouse distribution to the east, we have the airport, proposed industrial PAD to the south, agricultural lands to the west and north, and here's where we are, right here. Land uses for this parcel, this is where we are for the piece, surrounding it is basically a business and commerce in our general plan. We do have a portion here that is designated for industrial. Current zoning, the piece is agricultural urban. Surrounding it, a lot of industrial, light industrial, to the east, to the west, a little bit of commercial here. Again, this property is agricultural urban. Piece here, agricultural urban. Airport is ag. This is part of the development plan that the applicant would like to construct on the property. With the I-1 zoning, they would like to do several buildings here on the 114 acres, industrial complex, some smaller buildings here fronting along Bullard, also on Yuma Road. Though I should note that this is a rezoning to I-1 light industrial and not a PAD. So, as market conditions would warrant something different, the property owner could develop several large, several small buildings, or a few larger buildings. All uses would have to be, though, compliant with the I-1 zoning district. And on October 22nd, an item came before council. Staff is looking for direction on development along Bullard. And what came out of this, the work session, was staff worked with a design firm, came up with some design guidelines, and part of that is, you can see, that mile stretch from Van Buren all the way down to Yuma, will look at entry monumentation at the entries to Bullard. And then, as you can see here, these are those intersections, nice landscaping, signage for branding, pavement treatment. And then, this is the whole stretch, kind of gives you the big picture. You're looking at kind of a formal cohesive design along that mile stretch. You'll have groves of trees, artificial turf, and rock gabion walls. Again, keep that cohesive theme for that mile stretch. As a rezoning, this went through our public hearing notification process, mailings to surrounding property owners, legal advertisements, posting of the property. To date, staff did not receive any public inquiries on that notice. Planning and Zoning Commission heard this at their meeting of December 5th. They voted to forward a recognition approval to the council. There was no opposition to the item voiced at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. Staff has reviewed this. We find it consistent with the general plan. We find it compatible with the surrounding area. As such, staff and Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval, subject to those stipulations, in a staff report. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staff and applicant are here for questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to speak? Please come forward. Please state your name, address, and telephone, not your telephone number, for the City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor Lord, council members. My name's Fritz Wyler with Prologis. We are the sponsors of the rezon application today. I'm office out of 4444 Elwood Drive in Phoenix.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening. I've had the privilege of having a chance to meet with several of you, as we've gone through the planning commission hearings, working closely with the economic development team, working closely with the planning guidelines to help try to recognize the vision of what the city wants to achieve along the Bullard Ave corridor. We have sat down and reviewed enhanced landscaping requirements, working with the city. Our plan is noted as we look for the I-1 industrial zoning. This is land that will be able to support approximately a little over 2 million square feet of development over time. We have plans in place that are substantially in accordance with what the Planning Commission has been reviewing. We actually will be submitting our formal site plan approval on December 21st. So, we are moving quickly, subject to the rezon approval, of course. We are a large publicly traded real estate investment trust. We self-finance all our own development projects. We do not have joint venture partners. We sit down, we work closely with the planning commissions and the cities, and have a vision for creating a modern Class A Commerce Park. So, we've been looking at Goodyear for the last four years, in particular, and really honed in on this particular site, as it offers the visibility, the access, the amenities that we're attracted to here, and working closely with the team. We're excited to move this project forward. With that, though, I don't like to open up any questions that the council might have, so I could try to address them as best I can.
Well, thank you very much. And if council does, we'll call you and can answer the questions, all right? Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak? All right, then, I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the City Clerk please read Resolution 2018-1914 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1914, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the City Clerk, titled Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number 18-10, City of Goodyear AZ Rezon Case, and Prologis Commerce Park at Goodyear Legal Description, and Bullard Ave Corridor Design Treatment Strategies, November 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2018-1914? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second from, that was you, all right, from Councilman Loretano. Who did the second?
Second.
Councilman Stip did the second. Thank you, council. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pozillo.
More comments than anything else. I appreciate you coming in and explaining the project with us, and I believe it fits what we want to get done there on Bullard. And I appreciate you sitting down with staff, staff coming up, especially with the landscaping, because we believe that's one of our gateways through the city, and wish you much success going forward. I'm in favor of this rezoning. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilman Loretano.
I want to also thank you for spending the time and sitting down with us and showing us your vision, and I'm excited to see this area developed, and I was very impressed with the entry and all the attention to detail, so welcome to Goodyear.
Thank you.
Councilman Hampton?
I'm kind of going to echo the same thing. So, yeah, I also appreciate you coming in and going over with us, and let us answer the questions, and understand a little bit more about the project. And, yeah, I'm all for it. I think it's a great addition to the community, and looking forward to more tenants being in that area and using that facility. I think it's going to look good, and I think the landscaping looks good as well, so it's going to be a great addition to the city. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry for interrupting. Councilmember Stip?
That's okay. I will echo the same things, but I do appreciate the work that you did ahead of time before we, before we even brought it to planning and zoning. Prologis is a nationwide company, and it's a great, it's a great addition to our city, and we're very excited about what you're bringing. I appreciate the work that you did with staff on fixing the Bullard Road appearance and all the efforts there, and I think it just goes to show what a great relationship we have with the business community, and our willingness to work to try to get to a mutually acceptable position. So, thank you and welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember Cano?
Well, I'm going to join in the echoing of thanking you for choosing Goodyear. I know there are a lot of choices that you have. You bring a name and a presence to this corridor, which is very important to us, and so you're going to set a high bar, and we appreciate you choosing us.
Well, the mayor's very excited. We've been working in that area when I was Chair of the City Center Committee, and we were certainly delayed in some of that happening, but we always knew Bullard was very special. And so, we welcome with open arms. We're excited to see the end result. And of course, let me tell you, this council loves to see dirt moved, so when we see that happen, we're all going to be cheering as we drive by to observe it. So, thank you so much for choosing Goodyear.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate it.
All right. All right, council, let's do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pozillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Will the City Clerk please read, read Ordinance 2018-1414 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1414, condition approximately 114 acres located at the northeast corner of Bullard Ave and Yuma Road, from the AU Agricultural Urban Zoning District to the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District. Amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, and I have a second from Councilmember Cano. Open for council discussion? I think we've really discussed it, so let's do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pozillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, 7.3, and I'm taking this opportunity to move 7.3 forward. 7.3 is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone Phoenix 10-11 property from the final PAD to the light industrial with PAD overlay. So, I'm opening the public hearing. Karen Craver, Planner 3, presenting. Welcome, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. The Phoenix 10-11 279 acre property is located between MC 85 on the north and Broadway Road on the south, and from east of Bullard Ave on the west to west of Litchfield Road on the east. Jordan Rose of Rose Law Group submitted a request on behalf of the property owner to rezone the property from final PAD to I-1 light industrial with a PAD overlay to develop a technology center. The PAD overlay is requested to increase the maximum building height from 50 feet to 60 feet, and to increase the maximum building coverage from 50% to 60%. It's to allow metal buildings to be constructed on the site, and to allow chain link fencing on the site. The Planning Division, in collaboration with other city departments, evaluated the request as it pertains to development of this property as a technology center. Because of the locational characteristics of the property outlined in your staff report and in the rezon ordinance, staff is recommending approval of the request. The Planning Commission is also recommending approval of the request. Therefore, we ask that council approve the resolution, approve the rezon and PAD overlay by adopting the resolution and ordinance attached to your staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have of me, and Jordan Rose is also here on behalf of the property owner.
Thank you, Karen. Would the applicant like to speak? Jordan, welcome.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of the council, for your records, I'm Jordan Rose with Rose Law Group, and with me is Chad Kohling from Jacobs Engineering. I just wanted to say thank you to your staff, to Julie, to Winnet, to Rorick, to Karen, and all the others who we've worked very closely with over the last many months. We've worked hard, they've worked hard, and I think we've come to a great place, so we're very excited about coming to Goodyear, and thank you for all your leadership.
Well, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would any of the audience like to speak? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the City Clerk please read Resolution 2018-1920 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1920, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the City Clerk, entitled Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number 18-12, Phoenix 10-11 Legal Description, and Phoenix 10-11 I-1 Light Industrial Park Zoning District with PAD overlay dated November 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilmember Stip, and a second by Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip.
Jordan, thank you very much for the work that you've done. For the public, we've had a number of executive session meetings on this matter. There are probably not going to be a lot of questions from us, but it is an exciting project. Anytime a landowner comes and purchases a parcel this large, it gives us hope for the continued bright future that we have here in the city. So, we welcome you, and please pass that along to the property owner. Thank you.
Councilman Pozillo.
Just to piggyback on those comments, we spoke on the phone. Again, there's been a lot of prior discussion on there, and as the mayor said earlier, I'm really looking forward to dirt being moved and things going vertical. Thank you very much.
Councilman Loretano?
Yes, and I want to echo that. I want to thank you all for all the hard work and the staff as well for getting this project moving forward. It is a great project. Thank you for taking the extra efforts to do the screening and everything, and I think it will fit very well into that area. It's a much more industrial area, so I think you've done a great job, and so, welcome to Goodyear.
Councilman Hampton?
Also, welcome to Goodyear. I'm excited for this Phoenix 10-11 project. I think it'll be a good addition to the city, and we're definitely excited to have it, and looking forward to work with the property owner in the long future, so, thank you.
Yes, and I think that's, council's finished, so we're pleased. It's kind of one of those things I want to stand up and go yippee, but I won't, okay? I'll just say we're very pleased, and thank you so much for the quality work that you've done during this process. Staffs appreciate it, and I'm sure you appreciate how great our staff is, too.
Your staff is amazing, and to some of your points, we just can't wait to build, so thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, then, let's have a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pozillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Will the City Clerk please read an Ordinance 2018-1418 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1418, rezoning approximately 279 acres of land located between the north side of Broadway Road and the south side of MC 85, and extending from east of Bullard Ave to west of Litchfield Road. From the final planned area development, PAD zoning district with underlying C2 General Commercial, I-1 Light Industrial Park, and I-2 General Industrial Zoning, to the I-1 Light Industrial Park Zoning District with a PAD overlay. Amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 2018-1418. Open for council discussion? I think we've discussed out, right? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pozillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we will now adjourn to executive meeting.
it gives us hope for the continued bright future that we have here in the city. So we welcome you, and please pass that along to the property owner. Thank you.
Councilman Pizzillo.
Just to piggyback on those comments, we spoke on the phone. Again, there's been a lot of prior discussion on there. And as the mayor said earlier, really looking forward to dirt being moved and things going vertical. Thank you very much.
Councilman Loretano.
Yes, and I want to echo that. I want to thank you all for all the hard work and the staff as well for getting this project moving forward. It is a great project. Thank you for taking the extra efforts to do the screening and everything, and I think it will fit very well into that area. It's a much more industrial area. So I think you've done a great job, and so welcome to Goodyear.
Councilman Hampton.
Also, welcome to Goodyear. I'm excited for this Phoenix 10-11 project. I think it'll be a good addition to the city, and we're definitely excited to have it and looking forward to work with the property owner in the long future. So, thank you.
Yes, and I think that's, council's finished, so we're pleased. It's kind of one of those things I want to stand up and go yippee, but I won't. Okay? I'll just say we're very pleased, and thank you so much for the quality work that you've done during this process. Staffs appreciate it, and I'm sure you appreciate how great our staff is, too.
Your staff is amazing, and to some of your points, we just can't wait to build. So, thank you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right then, let's have a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Will the city clerk please read an Ordinance 2018-1418 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance Number 2018-1418 rezoning approximately 279 acres of land located between the north side of Broadway Road and the south side of MC-85 and extending from east of Bullard Avenue to west of Litchfield Road. From the final planned area development, PAD zoning district with underlying C2 general commercial, I-1 light industrial park, and I-2 general industrial zoning, to the I-1 light industrial park zoning district with a PAD overlay. Amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 2018-1418. Open for council discussion. I think we've discussed out, right? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, great. We're back to 7.2. On the agenda is a public hearing to consider a special use permit for Verizon Wireless Communication Facility. Open the public hearing. Katie Wilkin, Planning Manager, will be presenting. Katie?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As stated, this is a proposal to locate a new wireless communication facility at the Goodyear Center Point Development, which is located north of I-10 and east of Pebble Creek Parkway. There is an existing wireless communication facility inside of the freeway pylon sign for Goodyear Center Point. This proposal would locate a new 65-foot-tall monopole cell tower nearby, as you can see in the photo simulation. The proposal meets all city Goodyear codes and ordinances. Notice has been sent, and the city to date has not received any inquiries or objections to the proposal. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this request and recommended approval to the city council. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, if they want to speak or anything? Oh, there he comes. Welcome.
Good evening. Steve Seolick, Cochrane Consulting, representing Verizon Wireless, 2166 East University in Tempe. Just to supplement the staff's presentation, Verizon would like to upgrade the existing facility within the marquee. However, additional antennas would not remain concealed, and the additional radios for those technologies will cause overheating within the marquee sign. So that is the reason why we're trying to propose a new facility. The monopole design will match the existing paltries with the next shopping center, and we're just trying to keep the facility close to the existing site so we don't lose any coverage within the area. If you have any questions or comments, I'll be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, let's move on. I'm going to close this public hearing. Can I have a motion and a second to approve this special use permit to allow the monopole and the associated equipment at the Goodyear Center Point? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard the motion by, I thought I heard you, yes. Councilman Kano, and then a second by Councilman Loretano. Open for council discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor, the applicant, please.
Who is going to actually build a monopole?
It's Verizon Contractors.
I know. Who's the contractor on it?
I, it's to be bid.
Have they built other monopoles in Goodyear? Are they the same? So there's not going to be any deviation from the structure and the makeup of it?
No, no, it won't. It will be similar design.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You all right?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Our next public hearing is to consider a special, 7.4, is a public hearing to consider a special use permit for a church in Australia Crossing, sorry, Australia Crossing Business Park PAD. Open the public hearing.
Mayor, before we begin, I'd like to request an executive session on this matter.
Do I hear a motion?
That's, I'm making a motion for an executive session.
Okay, make a motion for an executive, a second?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we will now adjourn to executive meeting. We get a meeting? So, we were Joe?
Yeah, you had opened the public hearing.
Yeah, we're still in the public hearing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just want to check. So, Joe Schmidt will be making planner, long-range planner, will present. Joe?
Mayor and council. Now, this item is a request for a special use permit for the Sword of the Spirit Church. The site for the church is situated on West Alini Street, which is west of Australia Parkway and south of Elwood Street. It's, property is currently zoned Australia Crossing Business Park PAD. Classification B, light industrial. PAD has its own terminology for land use classifications. It has an A for commercial-type properties and B for light industrial properties. The I-2 general industrial zoning is located to the west, south, and east. And to the north is a vacant property that is being proposed for residential development in Sundias Farms. The church is allowed with a special use permit. They intend to occupy 6,300 square feet of the building. Basic Metals, which is a metal fabrication operation, is, occupies the other 19,500 square feet. The church will be operated in a manner that does not conflict with the manufacturing use, and there's abundant parking on site. There's 51 spaces required for the combined uses and 240 spaces provided. The property has good access to Elwood and Australia by way of Alini Street and the adjacent North-South Street, which can take all the traffic to a signalized intersection at Australia and Elwood. It's located to, but outside of the airport noise contour. We had gotten comments from the City of Phoenix Aviation Division saying they had no objection. They asked for a couple of stipulations that we included in the recommendation. We have received a number of letters of objection from five neighboring owners of 11 lots, and those are outlined in red and was included in your agenda packet. Those property owners were concerned about the effect of certain separation requirements that are either in state law or the city zoning ordinance for certain types of uses that have to be separated from a church. This graphic gives you an idea of what those separation requirements look like for different types of uses. The dark blue line is 300 feet from the building for liquor license applications to the state. The light blue line is 500 feet for adult businesses, property line to property, building to property line. And then the gold line is 1,000 feet for medical marijuana facilities from the building to the church property line. We have evaluated the impact of the church separation requirements and with respect to medical marijuana. All the parcels in this area are within a mile of the existing facility and would be ineligible for a site. I would acknowledge, though, that if, that could change if the existing site were abandoned or relocated so that, at the present time, they're not eligible. As far as adult retail businesses go, the immediate properties within the 500 feet, most of them are in the Australia Crossings PAD, which prohibits such uses. And only a portion of the, some of the other adjoining properties would be affected by the 500-foot requirement and would basically still have room to develop if they so choose and are properly zoned. Many are not properly zoned. Lastly, with respect to liquor licenses, there was a lot of discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission about that. There are basically five licenses that are subject to the 300-foot rule. All of the other licenses are not subject to 300 feet, and there's some 20-odd liquor license categories. I have, I'm prepared to give you in great detail the effect on each lot that's adjacent to the property, but I would summarize by saying that we have looked at it and feel that all of the impacts are negligible and not material. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission was concerned about the effect of separation requirements for the church and the impact on adjoining properties. In the course of the discussion, there was some misinformation or inaccurate information that was confusing. And I think, based on that, the commission, a majority of the commission that was present felt uncomfortable in voting for it. And so they, on a motion to approve the case, it failed by a vote of two to three, which means it's a failed motion is the same as a recommendation for denial. But staff has since clarified those separation requirements and still feels that they're not material and recommending approval with stipulations that are attached to the staff report. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have of me.
I appreciate that, Joe. Is the applicant here? Would he like to speak?
I believe they are.
Please state your name and your address.
My name is Jim Brown. I'm a pastor of Sword of the Spirit Church. My address is 2995 North Point Ridge Road, Buckeye, Arizona. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Council, and everyone else that is present. Sword of the Spirit Church is an established community church. We consist of approximately 50 to 60 active members, and we are a non-denominational multicultural church. And it has taken some time for us, Sword of the Spirit, to find a location that would accommodate the church and also be affordable for us. The sub-lease space at Basic Metals Building Lot 16 offers an excellent opportunity for the church. There's adequate space for the congregation and an abundance of parking, as Joe alluded to. Also, with the help of the Planning Department and the Building Safety Department, the church has been able to come up with a plan that meets the building codes. SOS is not the first church in this neighborhood. The River of Life Lutheran Church was given a special use permit in the Australia Crossing in 2014 by the Planning Commission. In addition, the Community Bingo Parlor also obtained a special use permit for its space in Australia Shops. Three new tenants, Australia Mountain Insurance, Arthur Murray Dance Studio, Beyond Gymnastics, all open for business in the Australia Retail Shops in 2017 and 18. These are very kid and family-friendly companies. Two out of the three of these companies give lessons to children. A church such as ours filled with families, adults, and children will fit nicely in this neighborhood of tenants. The church itself will have little or no impact on traffic, considering there's 50 to 60 families at this time. All in all, the church should blend well into the existing neighborhood. The church members will bring businesses to the local restaurants, a little taste of Italy. In that regards to that, as a church, usually we go and eat after services on a Sunday. So I would really be hesitant to think the little, a little taste of Italy would not want to share in our business that we would provide in that community. And so, a few of our family members as well, they live here in Goodyear. Kids, they go to the local schools. They participate in local activities here. The patronage is done in Goodyear. We've lived in Goodyear ourselves. Our daughter graduated from Desert Ed High School. We also provide services to a local assisted living facility, which is Merle Gardens down on Pebble Creek. We go there every Wednesday, and we provide church to the seniors that are there in Pebble Creek. We also go there twice a month on Sundays to provide them. We take the church to them. And it is amazing to watch the things that the Lord does, being able to do that, to have a heart and compassion for the seniors. And so, I wanted to digress just a little bit, not much, but in regards to some of the things that were presented or stated concerning the church itself. And as I alluded to, the River of Life Lutheran Church was in the same complex, and we're outside of that. But they've since moved, and they're located down here on 725 East Australia Parkway, right next to the post office. And also that there's some issues that arise concerning the ability for liquor, I guess liquor licenses from a 300-foot perspective. And I looked at some things with the River of Life being at the Australia address, and right next door to it is our Creative Escape. And so they actually have a paint and wine studio right next door to the church, right here in Goodyear. And yet, we are asking for a special use permit, and we're not violating any codes or standards in regards to that relationship. So, I wanted to make sure also that in looking at one of the letters that Mr. Kirk had referenced to concerning us, that we, they would be objecting to the church being there because we would create setbacks and those things. I wanted to know what type of setbacks would we as a church with children, as in case also relationships with some of the businesses in the area that provide dancing and instructions to the children as well? How would we as a church create setbacks when we have children, too, that may someday want to go and be part of the Arthur Murray Dance Studio? So I have, you know, some regards, questions concerning that. Also, I wanted to make a reference to Mr. Kirk's statement that we as a church, or neither party would, would be happy. Well, we think this is an excellent location for the church, and we're all about people. And sometimes I like to play bingo, so I may go play bingo at the Community Bingo Center there. And also in regards to that, that, again, we are a community church. We're a multicultural church. And, you know, I thought in standing here when we first started, you know, we said the Pledge of Allegiance. And in it, it related to God. And I thought, we as a church, we are about God. And I never want to lose that. Because if we're saying Pledge of Allegiance to God concerning the United States of America, and we're looking at ourselves as people and we're together, then I don't see why a church couldn't be placed in a community and in a location where we don't violate, we're not violating any codes or stipulations in regard to anything in the location of the church. And so, with that being said, if you have any questions for me, I'd love to take them right now.
Thank you. And after we close the whole hearing, if there is, they will be asked. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, would you like to call them? Let me just explain to them before you call them out. So, each speaker is limited to three minutes. The yellow light and the buzzer will let you know you have 30 seconds left to speak. Before you begin to speak, please identify yourself by clearly stating for the record your name and address. So, go ahead. Terry Kirk?
Terry Kirk, 12144 East Welsh Trails, Castillo, Arizona. I'm representing Kuma Development Inc., Crossing Development Inc., and the Australia Crossing Business Park. I am here representing our property owners, and our property owners wish the best for the Sword of the Spirit Church and all of its members. We are not protesting this as far as the church or religion is concerned. This is a lack of losing some of the rights that we have since we've already gone through a PAD. We're already restricting ourselves on the CCNRs, and we're losing the right to develop and to sell our properties with extended uses. The church coming in takes away some of those rights for our property. First of all, the church is leasing. The church isn't buying part of the property to step in and work with us. And in fact, the church, or its applicants, I must say, never did come to the Property Owners Association and pitch this or ask questions about the CCNRs, et cetera. It was obvious at the Planning and Zoning Meeting that the CCNRs had not been looked at because, you know, the applicant did not know that there are no adult business entertainment uses allowed in the ECBP by the CCNRs that have already been approved and recorded for the town. So, what also is in the CCNRs is that everything that has to be done or changed, altered, et cetera, as far as landscaping, entrances, painting, signs, HVAC units, et cetera, have to be approved by the Architectural Control Committee. And this is what I was referring to in my letter to you, is that the church is going to come in here, and they're going to have to come to the Architectural Committee and ask for these approvals when each one of the responses of the property owners has been negative. If you saw Mr. Schmitz's diagram, all the taints in red, those were the surrounding businesses that did not want the church in there. And since that time that he made that diagram, there have been two more responses that were included in your email. So, in other words, good luck to the church. We, however, would like to keep our property rights not be limited. If there were no setbacks that were required by the church, we wouldn't have a problem. And it is with that that I thank you for your time, and I ask you to support the decision that was made by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Melissa Marks.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Melissa Marks. I'm with Colliers International. My address is 15342 West Watson Lane, Surprise, Arizona, 85379. I office in Goodyear and in Phoenix. Our commercial real estate team has been doing business in Goodyear for a number of years. I personally was involved in negotiating the lease on behalf of the landlord for Arthur Murray Dance Studio, Beyond Gymnastics, and the Australia Mountain Insurance, who sells all-state insurance. Bonnie and Brian, my associate brokers, were also involved in representing the owner of Lot 16 and bringing Basic Metals to Goodyear along with a number of other businesses. I personally love Goodyear, city of good love. Working with your staff, we represent a number of large clients in this area and truly have had nothing but success with your staff. So, thank you. Personally, I am married to a pastor. So I am connected in the church community and have worked with church clients for a number of years, as has Bonnie Hallie, who is also married to a pastor. So we have a little bit of intimate knowledge on the challenges of, and the wonderful things that a church brings to a community. When we did the When we did the uh got the other leases to fully execution, there was uh not a lot of conversation with the Estrella Business Park, the association. And so because there were no modifications to the space that Sword of the Spirit would be leasing, um, there was no need to go through that. So I'd like to address some of the objections if I could. One of the claims was that um it did not object to the church, but just objected to the restrictions that other businesses would have in the centers. I think Joe presented very well that those are negligible. Um, the other property owners that were uh objecting this were outside of those square footage and so that was negligible. Uh, the POA does need to approve any alterations or change to the property and that applies to construction and improvements or alterations that alter, and I quote, "the natural land or the appearance of any lot," according to their CCNRs five point one. This church is not altering the natural land or appearance of any of the lot. Thus, this restriction does not apply. Uh, some of the other claims frankly had to do more with the city of Goodyear and had nothing to do with my client, the church, Sword of the Spirit. Uh, so I believe those were also negligible. As I'm sure that you all are aware, um, the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Acts protects houses of worship from discrimination in zoning and landmarking laws. And it specifically focuses on zoning codes and landmarking laws that may permit religious assemblies only with individualized permission from the zoning board or landmarking commission. So we really do ask that you um agree with Joe and your planning and zoning committee and, and department in passing this special use permit on behalf of Sword of the Spirit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
The last speaker was actually the applicant and he's already spoken.
Okay. So no other speakers coming forth. All right. Well, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And can I have a motion and a second to approve the special use permit to allow the church and the Estrella Crossing Business Park PAD? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Council, Councilman Bazillo.
He made the second.
I can't hear you.
No, I made the second.
Oh, you made, oh, Councilman Bazillo, can you correct that? I'm sorry. And he was right next to me and I couldn't hear him. So I'm sorry about that, Joe. All right. Um, so council discussion? Yes, Councilman Lortano. I know I'm going to ask him. Yes. Would you like that?
Yeah, would you ask the?
All right. We're, we're asking the lawyer to step in on this and uh and it's very profound because there is a case in, in the state of Arizona, very similar to this. Uh, and so that's why we went into executive session. And so would you mind uh presenting that?
And, and just following up on, on the reference that the last speaker's uh made to the religious, the Federal Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, the RALUPA Act, uh, there was a case uh out of Arizona, actually, it's a city of Yuma. It's the Centro versus City Yuma dealt with a conditional use permit for a church in which the city at that time uh denied the conditional use permit uh based upon the fact that they want to preserve an entertainment uh district and they were concerned about the impacts the church would have through setbacks uh for future uh liquor licenses, uh, which is very similar to the facts that have been presented uh today and at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it's based upon the fact that Ninth Circuit uh ruled against the city and found that that was not a valid reason to deny a use permit uh that supports the staff's recommendation uh to approve the special use permit in this case.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any other comments? Any other comments? All right. Then we're going to vote on this. So, but I think I'd like a roll call vote, please. I think it would help the people that are in the audience, so.
Mayor, I need a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Stip does have something to say. Go ahead.
So the, I guess an initial question to the attorney is um denying the special use permit based on this use is, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but basically it's against the recent ruling or against the law.
Yeah, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals would find that based upon those reasons, it would violate RALUPA under the federal law.
Okay. So um I think that puts, it puts me as obviously as a council member in a very difficult position because um while in a normal zoning case, we may be um, or I may be, I'll speak that way, more likely to listen to the landowner surrounding the property and give credence to that. Um, however, this case is different than a typical land use case. And um and I think that makes, it almost makes our choice inevitable. However, um, I shouldn't say however. I, I think the, the issues that were raised really uh, it's about everyone's property rights. It's about the property rights of the folks that are going to lease the property to the church. It's about the property owners who are adjacent. Um, and I think we have to look very carefully at, at what we're going to start to restrict. When I look at the list that we talked about earlier, uh, you know, dispensaries and adult uh, you know, novelty uh stores, which are prohibited by the CCNRs of your uh, of your area, are not prohibited in uh, in other areas. So um I think sometimes it's a matter of uh, let's take something good and let's be thankful we're not getting something, something bad. And um so for me, the choice is obvious. However, um, I want the property owners in the adjacent properties to know that this is not, for me, a vote that is unsympathetic to you. It's just, I virtually have no choice but uh based on that court ruling on how to, on how to move forward. I wanted to explain that as I.
Any other response? Well, our response as the mayor, I, I agree with some of the things you're saying. It's uh, I know the yin and the yang. I don't know how we want to actually place that. Uh, I understand uh when somebody owns property, they feel they have the right. Like you said, I can understand that. Um, but in a position like this, we are representing the city. Um, and the law has spoken in one court case and we don't see um that there would be a positive outcome for us to delay this and pursue a lawsuit. So with that, I would like a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. The next item, seven point five on business, is to conduct a public hearing to consider a use permit for hazardous process in the one dash two area of the Airport Commerce Center PAD. Open for public hearing. Joe Schmidt, long range planner, will be presenting. Joe?
Mayor and counsel. This is a request from Arizona Isotope Science Research Incorporated. They're requesting a use permit uh for a site that's located on La Australia, uh, that's east of Bullard Avenue, uh, south of MC eighty-five. It's an I-two general industrial area in the Airport Commerce Center PAD and the surrounding area is also industrial uses or industrial zoning on vacant land. The I-two zoning allows uses involving a hazardous process with a use permit. And by definition in our zoning ordinance, a hazardous process that involves radioactive materials, uh, a process that involves radioactive materials is considered a hazardous process. The process is required to be reviewed and approved by the fire chief. And in this particular instance, since radioactive materials are involved, the construction and operation of the facility will be licensed by the Arizona Bureau of Radiation Control. This is the site plan for the project. It's a five acre site. The, the idea is that it'll have over eighty-three thousand square feet total, forty-two thousand, almost forty-three in the first phase. And then the second phase would be almost an equal size. This is the, are the, a couple of the elevations for the building. Uh, the office area will be single story and uh, and go around the outside of the building. And then the uh area where the cyclotron will be located will be approximately forty-two feet high. They'll, uh, the applicant is proposing to install what's called a Cyclone seventy cyclotron. It's made in Belgium. It's a hundred and forty ton unit, twelve foot in diameter and uses thirty-two seventy uh electron volts, million, million electron volts. Uh, the, the cyclotron is placed within a concrete vault uh with balls that'll be approximately ten foot thick. And there will be ten foot uh tall plug style doors. This is a schematic of the cyclotron and you can see the doors are those that are sticking out the sides and then they're on rails and they uh roll forward or back then to, to plug the cyclotron when it's in operation to contain any radiation. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at the December fifth meeting and recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Staff is also recommending approval subject to stipulations. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them.
Thank you. Is the applicant here?
That's a good question.
Would the applicant like to speak?
He's coming.
My name is Wesley Brand Brooksby. I'm a co-founder of this Arizona Isotope Science Research Project. I would have to express from my initial meeting with the mayor and from the invitation from the city manager and the excellent support that we received from your staff. They have done a thorough job. This project is medical from beginning to end. This machine will produce something called an isotope. An isotope is something that doctors inject into your bloodstream. It circulates in your bloodstream and then they can take pictures. And they can see inside of your body as clearly as they can see the outside of your body. Therefore, they can determine if there's anything wrong. They can determine if there's anything that they can do to help you. This machine will be used to produce these isotopes. It will also be used to do research, to see if there are other things that can be found. A scientist at Oak Ridge National Laboratory has stated publicly, he thinks we've only found about fifty percent of what might be found to help the human race. Last week, we received a communication from Mayo Clinic. They want to do research at this facility. They have three cyclotrons, but they're smaller and they can't do as much research as they could if they had access to do research at this facility. So we'll be producing an isotope for analysis and for treatment. And we'll be looking for other items that might be helpful. We also received a letter from the Notre Dame University in Indiana. They want to do research at this facility. The Office of Science of the Department of Energy has indicated that they want to do research and that they will provide money for grants for other people who want to do research. You probably already know that the universities in Arizona, they have indicated that they want to create a new department that could do research at this facility. They've asked one of our team members to head up that new department. We're excited because the US government has found out that the demand for this product is outstripping the supply. An independent study indicates they would need seven more of these facilities in the United States. There's one operating in France at a university and has been operating for over five years. One just started in Noblesville, Indiana, last year. This will be the third one to be operating, the second one in the United States. I'm sure you'll see more of them because this type of medicine is going forward rapidly. One of our team members is the second doctor to ever study this type of medicine. He recently retired from the National Institute of Health in Washington DC. It is an outstanding team that's been assembled. It will bring a lot of attention from research people throughout the world. It will be difficult to decide who gets the time to do research and who doesn't. It will be a challenge to determine who might come up with the best for the human race. It's kind of like Solomon deciding to cut the baby in half. It's going to be hard. They'll have to submit the requests. We'll have to study them carefully. We have a number of doctors on our team and they have their own ideas of what is most important. We're thrilled that your mayor invited us to come here. She's been very patient with us. It's taken us a long time to get to this point.
I was in the council.
But um there won't be any Russian material injected in your body. Thank you. I have invited um the director of the Arizona State Bureau of Radioactive Control, which is part of the state uh agency on safety services, to come and answer any questions that you might have. I'd like Brian to come forward now.
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. My name is Brian Gretzky. I'm with the Bureau of Rage Control. I'm the chief uh in the Arizona Department of Health Services. I'm just here to if you, anyone has any questions? Currently, we have nine uh cyclotrons that produce radio pharmaceuticals, not to this energy level, um, but nine across the state. And we also have seventy-six uh Lenax that are used for cancer therapy. So with that, if anyone has any questions for me, technical related, I'm.
Yes, they might. I need to close the public hearing and then they're allowed to ask them. So if you want, you want to stand, that's fine. You're going to take the first seat there until I close, finish. Are there any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? And I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the special use permit for the hazardous process in the I-two area of the Airport Commerce Center PAD? Do I hear the motion?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip and a second from Councilman Hampton. Is that correct? All right, just, just look at me when I ask you that, so I know. Thank you so much. All right. So open for council discussion. Yes.
As a recipient of um this treatment for my thyroid cancer, I thank you and I'm delighted that you're coming to Goodyear.
Councilman Lortano.
I, I'm very excited. When I was reading about this project um and, and the scientific um leaps that it, it makes and everything and to be here in Goodyear, I, I am very impressed and um I'm very impressed in all the information we got and I can't wait to open. I hope that you invite us and kind of show us how it works um once it's all open and running. So thank you and welcome.
Any other?
I would just.
Also like to add, uh, thank you for selecting Goodyear.
This is, the medical advancement possibilities are certainly unlimited. Goodyear has a rich history of innovation and so we're excited to have this level of technology and research uh coming to our town. So thank you again.
And Brian, thank you for introducing yourself and letting us know. Uh, I think, you know, that might in the future have some verification or questions uh on this, once it goes public. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have a question here. Okay. Councilman Hampton.
Also want to welcome, also welcome to the, to the community. And, and.
And is the vault, I'm sure it's concrete all the way and the top, ten-foot walls all the way around, and then I'm sure with, with your agency, I'm sure you're checking those symmetry up to the gate, things like that, see where it goes. So, yeah.
So for a, a new facility, what we do is we do surveys around the entire vault and the ceiling.
Yeah.
And then we'll place those symmetry, which is a radiation detection piece. We'll do that for a year and monitor every month, and just see how much radiation is being exposed. And with the usual cyclotron, it's minimal. So no, almost no readings.
Like less than, less than two, less than one point, something like...
Usually, it's actually minimal, so non-detect.
Cool. All right, thank you.
Well, comment, any other comments? I have to say, this company has worked hard. This is not easy, the permitting and the technician, they have to go to Washington, the places they have to go. I was trying to figure out how many years ago that I sat down with them. I don't remember if I was in when I was a council or a mayor at that time. Oh, he's going, uh, six years ago. Yeah. Yes, well, I was in office six years ago as the mayor, but I thought it was extraordinary and a new subject matter for me, and the, the technical side of it. And I was so surprised because they didn't come. And I was waiting for them to come, and I thought they're going to be next year, well, maybe the next year, and they finally made it. So congratulations, because I know the hours and the intensity of being able to get licensed to do this. So let's vote on this, all right? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Welcome to Goodyear. We're so pleased. The next item on business is seven-point-six to accept the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Gerald Appelson, Finance Manager, presenting. Gerald? Jer Rudd, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the council. Tonight, we're here to receive our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year 2018 that ended on June thirtieth of 2018. Before we get to some financial highlights, we'll talk first about the annual audit that was performed by Heinfeld, Meach, and Company. Jill Shaw is in attendance tonight if we have any questions for her. They have offered up an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean audit, for fiscal year 2018. They've identified no significant deficiencies or weaknesses, or material weaknesses in our processes. One of the items that we discussed with the Audit Subcommittee on November twenty-eighth was the IT Disaster Recovery Plan, and they have offered us about ten recommendations to go through and update our disaster recovery plan. We first implemented that in 2010, and then had an update about four and a half years ago or so. Next, we'll look at some financial highlights. First, we'll touch on this government-wide net position. Net position is a measure that allows investors to compare a municipal government or any government's financial statements with a private industry. And in this case, our net position increased by four-point-three percent to seven-hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars, an increase of about thirty-one million dollars. Next, we'll focus on some fund financial highlights. That was fund financial highlights? Fund balance for the governmental funds. You see an increase of about twenty percent to a hundred-and-thirty-one-point-four million dollars. It's a twenty-two-million-dollar increase over the previous fiscal year. The fund, the fund balance in the governmental funds is important because this is kind of a jumping-off point for our next year's budget discussions. What we'll do is we'll take a look at that hundred-and-thirty-one-point-four-million-dollar balance, and we'll break that down a little bit. So we have two-point-four-million dollars of non-spendable fund balance. Those are non-cash assets, like inventory or prepaid items that we can't actually spend. They, they are non-cash assets. Next, we have restricted amounts of fifty-five-point-five million dollars, those majority of which are our development impact fees or items that are restricted specifically for capital improvement projects, like our bond, our bond revenues that we have. Also included in the restricted amount is our council-mandated contingency of four-point-four million dollars. We'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. Next, we have the categories of our committed and assigned fund balances. These are all of our asset replacement and risk management fund balances. The committed amount is for our ballpark. All of the other assigned are for our fleet and IT, police, fire replacement items. The reason why ballpark is committed is because the fund is separate from our general fund, where our other asset replacements are tied more closely with our general fund. And finally, we have our unassigned fund balance of sixty-point-five million dollars that we had as of the end of June thirtieth, 2018. Since that time, though, we have a 2019 budget that was adopted and included twenty-seven-point-two million dollars of CIP and one-time items, carryovers of ten-point-two million dollars, and contingency in the unassigned fund balance of ten-point-one million dollars. However, as I mentioned on the last slide, we have four-point-four million dollars additionally in our restricted fund balance for our council or our charter-mandated reserve. So the total is about fourteen-and-a-half million dollars in contingency. That brings our balance as of the end of 2019, after we get our budgeted items out of there of thirteen million dollars. That will be our jumping-off point for our fiscal year 2020 discussions. However, when we have those discussions, it's likely we'll be including that four-point-four million dollars of restricted fund balance, so a number around seventeen-point-four is where we should be. So just as a wrap-up, unmodified opinion from our auditors with no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, and our financial position continues to improve. If that or there are any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? I'd like a motion and second to accept the twenty-seventeen dash twenty-eighteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Pizzillo.
I enjoyed working with you as a member of the Audit Committee. Could you go back one slide, please? The thirteen-million balance after the 2009 budget, could you just kind of explain that a little bit? Because that's money that more than likely will be dedicated going somewhere. I'm guessing either it's replacement equipment, whether it's additional capital projects, et cetera. I, I don't want people to think that's just extra money that's kind of laying around just because you have a thirteen-million-dollar balance on there. Can you just kind of explain a little bit to the general public on there what makes up that thirteen million dollars that's left?
Mayor Lord, Councilmember Pizzillo, absolutely. So the thirteen million dollars is really going to be used for one-time items in future years, such as capital projects or other one-time items such as that, that would be identified during the budget process, some of which are longer-term projects that need funding from previous years to make those go.
So it won't be used for ongoing expenses, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, let's vote for this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We're on to seven-point-seven on business to approve a request for the preliminary plat for the first park PV three-oh-three, West Three, subject to stipulation. Hello, Stephen Carecia, Planner Three, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. We are looking at this property right here, Cotton Indian School, Citrus Thomas Road, about six-hundred acres, part of the PV three-oh-three planned area development, approved in 2007, been amended several times since. Last amended in June for, council probably remembers this part here, West Three-B, to allow industrial support equipment to go to a higher height. So it's been amended several times since, all designated for light industrial development. The developer is looking to subdivide this into five lots and a tract, and are doing so to facilitate a continued development of this section for industrial development. Staff, we've reviewed this subdivision. We do find it consistent with our subdivision regulations and with the PV three-oh-three PAD. As such, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval of this subdivision, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, for chance? Would he like to speak? Please say your name and address.
Yeah, TJ Weed, twenty-five-fifty-five East Camelback Road, Phoenix, Arizona. We just want to say thank you to the council and the staff for everything you guys have done on the PV three-oh-three project. It's been a really exciting project to work on, and we've had some great success with some really great companies and, and tenants here in Goodyear. So we're excited to continue that and continue all the great success we've had, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay, anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, let's get on with it. Is there a motion and second, is there a motion and second to approve the preliminary plat for the first park PV three-oh-three, West Three? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Was that you, Councilman Lortano?
Laura.
Thank you. It sounds like it comes over here for me. Sorry about that. So the motion was by Councilman Kano, and the second was by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion? Councilman Stip?
Just one comment, TJ. Thank, you can stay. PV three-oh-three is bringing some great businesses and great projects to our city. We don't get a chance to see you very often. We see Bob. So thank you very much for doing that. Thanks for continuing to work with us and for your faith in the city as we go forward.
Vice Mayor?
I have a question. Is this the first plat we've seen for this area, Steve?
Mayor, council, for this section, first preliminary plat, yes.
Okay, and then the, the blue lines that are up in the right-hand corner that are on top of the red line, is something already there?
We have done some minor land divisions throughout that do not come before the council. We had done, this is for the Aldi parcels that were up here at this section here, right here at the intersection of Indian School and Cotton.
Right, okay. That's what I thought. I drove it today, and, but I, I couldn't, I was using your map to drive it, and I wanted to know what the blue lines were. I couldn't tell. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? Let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Seven-point-eight on business is to approve a request for preliminary plat. There we go, that word. For PV three-oh-three, West Two, subject to stipulation. Steve, you're back on.
I am. Thank you again, Mayor, council. We move across the street to the east. We have about a hundred-and-twenty-one acres here. This is the West Two phase in the PV three-oh-three PAD. Again, light industrial for all of this area here. And again, we're, the applicant is looking to subdivide two, five lots. And again, continued industrial development within this area of PV three-oh-three. Staff, we've reviewed it. We find it consistent with our subdivision regulations and with the uses and development standards set forth in the PV three-oh-three. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval, subject to the STIPS in the staff report. Concludes my presentation, Mayor.
All right. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak?
No.
All right, there's, I'd like a motion and second to approve the preliminary plat for PV three-oh-three, West Two. Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. We're at seven-point-nine on the business to approve a request for a preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel eleven-point-E, subject to stipulation. Alex Lotinsky, Planner Two, presenting. Alex?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. The preliminary plat for parcel eleven-point-E in Estrella consists of approximately twenty-nine acres, ninety-three lots, and four tracks. The parcel is located in the Lucero neighborhood of Estrella and designated as low-medium-density residential. The parcel adjacent to it is eleven-F-one, which will be coming to you in January, which is why it's on the screen. It's a little preview. The PAD amendment that the, the council approved last month did amend the Lucero PAD. However, this PAD, or these parcels were not included with that amendment, and the preliminary plat is still in conformance with the development standards required by the PAD and all city engineering and planning standards. The main access to this parcel is provided off of a road, Cendaro, which is this one that connects down to the Hillside Drive, the main spine road within Lucero. And then a secondary access is provided through the east side that connects to eleven-F-one. Like I said, you'll be seeing next month. I included another foreshadowing of next month's preliminary plat, so you can see that secondary access will come off of Hillside Drive. And these stipulations included in the staff report, that there is the requirement that the, the emergency access, whether it be the permanent access or the temporary emergency access, be developed in order to meet emergency access requirements. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval on December twelfth, and staff recommends approval as well. This concludes my presentation. Pete Tyke is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Alex. You say he's here? Would the applicant like to speak? He's fine. You're comfortable back there, so I won't, all right, good. Are there any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Let's get on with it. Is there a motion and second to approve the preliminary plat for Estrella Parcel eleven-E? Do I hear the motion?
So moved. Second.
I know, I heard a motion from, yes, I heard Councilman Hampton, and I heard a second from Vice Mayor, was it Vice Mayor? Councilman Lortano. Thank you. Open for council discussion. No discussion? Let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Let's go to seven-ten on business to consider approving the purchase, purchase of property for the Fire Station one-eighty-one. Linda Beals, Real Estate Manager, will be presenting. Linda?
Good evening, Mayor and council. As noted, my presentation tonight is on the acquisition for Fire Station, the site for Fire Station one-eighty-one. Based on a study that was completed in 2016 and subsequent presentation to the council on that study, it was determined that the best location in the city for the Fire Station one-eighty-one is located at the corner of, well, just south of the corner of Celebrate Lifeway and Hundred Forty-third Avenue. You'll note that the acquisition area includes two parcels, a portion of which is owned by ADOT, which is approximately four-point-oh-nine acres, and another portion which is owned by a couple of entities which we're referring to as Cheyenne and Oxnard. Those, the, one question that sometimes will, that might come to mind is why the strip along Hundred Forty-third Avenue is as long as it is. It's because otherwise, we would have left a non-economic remnant, a separated remnant to the south, and the property owner required that we acquire that in order to move forward. However, it should be noted that they aren't charging us anything additional in order to acquire that portion of the property. The ADOT portion of the property appraised at five dollars a square foot, and that comes to eight-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars. The Cheyenne property, we're acquiring at five dollars and eighty cents a square foot, and as noted, that's for point-four-three acres, which is the portion that would have cut off here had we not needed to acquire the rest in order to move forward. With the estimated cost of approximately five thousand dollars in closing costs per site, we're looking at approximately one million, nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars. The purchase agreements have been attached as exhibits to the resolution, and they have been negotiated with the two property owners. We will be working through the signature process upon approval. The resolution will provide the city manager with the authority to execute the real estate purchase agreements and other documents required for the transaction. With this in mind, we recommend the adoption of Resolution two-thousand-eighteen-dash-one-nine-two-three. And I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Linda. Will the city clerk please read Resolution twenty-eighteen-dash-nineteen-twenty-three by Title Only?
Adopt Resolution number twenty-eighteen-dash-nineteen-twenty-three, approving the purchase of property for Fire Station one-eighty-one, located southwest of Celebrate Lifeway and Hundred Forty-third Avenue, authorizing and directing the city manager or her designate to execute the real estate purchase... purchase agreements, take actions, execute documents, and allow for non-substantive changes as required, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to adopt Resolution 2018-1923? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip and a second by Vice Mayor. Open for council discussion? All righty, let's do, oh, Councilman Bazillo.
On the picture, the area below, that's Arizona Department of Transportation, correct? That's their land?
The area in, this area right here? Yes, that's also area that they will retain.
Okay. Is there any possibility in the future that somebody may have to cross that pink strip to get to that land? The one that we bought, the extra piece?
They won't have, I mean, it would depend on what they developed it for. That's something the Planning and Zoning would have to look at. They would have access from Van Buren.
Okay, so they would not need that probably for?
Without knowing what they're developing and whether they'd have to have two points of access, I can't tell you for certain, but I can tell you it wouldn't leave that property landlocked. They would continue to have access onto Van Buren.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item is 7.11 on business to consider acquiring property rights for the Goodyear Water Treatment Facility and Raw Water Pipeline Delivery Project. Linda, you're still up. Go ahead.
Again, thank you. The item that I'm presenting next is one that I'm sure many of you have seen several times, but the city has entered into a agreement with the Central Arizona Project, the Salt River Project, to transport the city's Central Arizona Project's surface water allotment from SRP's Interconnect at the Granite Reef Dam to a point at approximately Avondale Boulevard and Broadway Road. We don't, we don't know the exact point at this time, but it'll be somewhere in this vicinity. Based upon that, the city entered into a contract with CH2M Engineers for the Design, Build, Preconstruction Services of Facilities required to transport and treat that CAP surface water. That contract includes the real estate acquisition services. CH2M is in the process of obtaining the legal descriptions, the appraisals, and other information that we're going to need in order to begin, or they're going to need, in order to begin the acquisitions of land rights for these facilities. City staff will be reviewing the appraisals and the property right offers. The parcel count for the various pipeline easements and other land rights has not been fully determined, because even though this alignment shows, it's not been absolutely determined that that's where it'll be yet. So, that's, that's an important fact, thing to point out. Even though I did bring a map, we're not certain that that's exactly where it's going to be yet. We're getting, they're getting very close, but the final decision has not been made. But it is anticipated there could be as many as 45 parcel acquisitions. With the, this process needing to move along at an extremely expedited pace to keep us on track to get the wa, surface water treated on time, we're coming to you tonight with the resolution to allow for the city manager and the city's attorney to be able to process these offer packages and to be able to accept the, make the offer, approve the offers and to allow the city to accept the various easements and other property rights that we're going to need in order to move this project through. This will alleviate the need for us to come back time and time again and bring you as many as 45 separate offers. That money has been budgeted as part of the CAP process, and we have those funds allocated specifically as part of the accounts for what is available for the lands. And again, I, we would like to request that you adopt Resolution 2018-1924.
Thank you, Linda. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2018-1924 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1924, authorizing the acquisition of any property rights necessary for the Goodyear Water Treatment Facility and Raw Water Pipeline Delivery Project. Further authorizing and directing the city manager or her designee and the city attorney to take actions and execute any documents, including the purchase agreements, and providing for effective dates.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to adopt Resolution 2018-1924? Do I hear the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second by Councilman Bazillo. Open for council discussion? Councilman Stip?
Is there a plan in place? I'm going to look probably more at the manager, since she's going to have the authority. Is there a plan in place to keep the council informed of land acquisitions along the way? Since we're basically turning over our responsibility to the manager?
Thank you. I was just conversing with the attorney. We'd be, if monthly would be appropriate or whatever, period of time that council would be interested in, we'd be pleased to make that type of report to council.
I don't know that it needs to be monthly unless you're doing a whole bunch of them, but I, I think one of our responsibilities is to, you know, pay attention to what, what's being done, and I have full confidence that you're going to take care of it. I think we have a kind of a checks and balance thing to make sure that we know what actions are being taken kind of now on our behalf. And I guess I would leave it to your discretion whether it's, whether monthly is necessary or quarterly, or, because I don't know how quickly these are all going to happen, but...
We can kind of, I think, look at how they're coming in. I think it's, the issue is they're in such a compressed timeframe that I think quarterly we may be pretty far down the road. So, we'll look at when the offers come in and maybe report back as far as offers and the transactions we've, that have occurred. You probably want to see what the appraised value of the land was versus the final price, so we can report all that out.
Yeah, and I'm okay with doing that as long as we've got some oversight from my, from speaking only, from me. Thank you.
I think it's kind of difficult with all that, I mean, pursuing that bill. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I have to tell you, that's a toughie. They're going to close quickly.
Talking after the fact.
We're not going to be on council. We're going to be here, and we're going to be there. I think you ought to take a little more consideration. I, I think that request is difficult, and I don't know if you, if you can actually really end up satisfying, and so I, I think we ought to have another suggestion about...
Can I clarify my, my request?
I would really like you to clarify that one.
All I'm asking for is an after the fact, what has been done. Not during the process, not...
You did not make yourself clear. You made it like it was continuing.
No, 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 no. Just as these things are coming through, after the fact, we did this, got that, moved on, did this, got that, moved on, did this, got that, moved on, after the fact. I'm not looking to approve it, I'm not looking...
Yeah, okay. No, no timeframe on them, because, you know, they could be...
I didn't want to.
Yeah, three, and then not for a while, and then four and five. Okay, all right. Vice Mayor?
It would just be helpful if you let us know, especially since we don't tonight know where it's going and what route it's going to go, so that if our constituents or our residents ask us about our dealings with CAP and how are we going to move the water, I would like to say, well, we're going down Avondale Boulevard to 107th and turning left or something, and, and right now, we don't know. That's all. But we don't need to know before the fact. It's just afterwards, it would be nice to, to know. Thanks.
Councilwoman Bazillo?
Yeah, to me, just to follow what, what Bill was saying, I'm not so much concerned with the timelines, because you guys are going to know how they're going to start to work. But what I think would be important is any variance report you have. This is drawn here now. It could be a quarter, whatever. What's actually changing, so we can see before and after. And from a variance, to me, all's I need is when it's done, is what did it appraise at and what we paid for it? That simple, you know, and hopefully the two match. That's the goal.
Any other comments? All right, let's vote on this. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton? Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Great, let's go to 7.712, the last item on business. Wow, we're almost there. Last item on business to consider adopting a transport agreement with Maricopa Ambulance. Paul Louisi, Fire Chief, presenting. Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, requesting council to authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary to enter into a contract with Maricopa Ambulance for the ambulance transport services for the city of Goodyear. Just for my way of background, the city has had an ambulance transport agreement since 2010, originally with Southwest Ambulance, which was eventually bought out by AMR, and we're currently in a contract with AMR today. In preparation for that contract to expire in February of 2019, the city in September of 2018 posted a request for qualifications for qualified vendors to submit their credentials and coverage plan for Emergency Transport Services Agreement. The city actually received only one proposal that night from Maricopa Ambulance, and then demonstrated their qualifications to serve as the city's emergency transport vendor. On October 22nd, city council received a letter of intent for ambulance transport services, which authorized the city manager to sign that letter of intent, and since then, we've been negotiating a contract with Maricopa Ambulance. Essentially, as a high, at a high level, the ambulance contract provides for a four-year contract term that would be, start on the effective date of the contract, provide for 24 hours, seven days a week coverage by four ambulances that were strategically deployed throughout the city. The agreement also has response performance measures that the contractor must adhere to. They also agree to pay all 911 dispatch fees, and also to pay for any time a Goodyear Fire Department paramedic rides into the hospital with that patient. After we get approval from, from the council tonight, we will be working directly with the Department of Health Services to submit that contract for final approval from them. The, there is some fiscal analysis that we did as well, that we would receive something that's very similar to our current AMR, Southwest Ambulance, ride-in fees. So, on a three-year average, we average about $118,000 in revenue from the vendor for the ride-in of our paramedic on those types of calls that require it. At this point, staff recommends approval of the Maricopa Ambulance contract for the city of Goodyear. We do have representatives from Maricopa Ambulance here tonight. We have Alan Smith, Michelle Engel, and Adam Stockton here, if you have any questions for them.
All right, thank you very much, then. That sounds good. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Yes, please come forward.
Hello, Mayor Lord and council. My name's David Tantone, and I am the Operations Manager for American Medical Response. I understand I'm probably standing up here at a bit of a disadvantage, being that we did not submit for the RFQ that originally went out, and I was kind of hoping I could have a moment to clarify that position. When the original RFQ was presented, as a company, we reviewed it, we went through it, and felt that the RFQ was financially unsustainable, not just for us, but for any company in this particular area. And with that, it was said in that RFQ that if we did not submit or agree totally with that RFQ, that our submittal would not be even recognized or looked at. So, therefore, we opted to not move forward with that. Instead, we were hoping that we could urge you to continue with our existing contract with the city. We still have a one-year extension available to us, and over that one year, instead of doing an RFQ, we feel that it would be in the city's best interest to go to a formal RFP, so that we could provide different opinions on the matter as far as how to provide the best level of service for the city. So, with that, I just wanted to clarify why we did not submit for the original RFQ. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? All right, let's get on. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2018-1926 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1926, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all documents necessary to enter into a contract with Maricopa Ambulance for ambulance transport services for the city of Goodyear, and allow for non-substantive changes to the contract.
Thank you. Can I have a motion of second to adopt the Resolution 2018-1926? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Council, Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second by Councilman Bazillo. Councilman Stip? Open for council discussion? Councilman Lortano?
I, I just want to thank the chief and all the city staff, because I know we've been kind of working on this issue for a while, and I know it's been a lot of hard work and ups and downs, and I really feel we're making a step forward, so thank you all for your hard work.
Any other comments? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Cano?
Aye.
Councilmember Bazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries. Well, great, we're to the end. How about that? So, let's start with the council. Do you have any comments or information? Where you've been, what'd I talk about?
Real quick.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not going to talk much about it, because I'm hoping both chiefs eventually will talk about it, but December the 8th, we did Shop with a Cop. It was fabulous. And December 15th, we did a Goodyear Philineed, and it was just unbelievable. And I want to thank all of the city staff and both of the chiefs' families for being so involved in each of these events. It really means a lot to see your families out with us, and we really want to thank both of you very much. And I want to wish everyone a merry, merry Christmas.
I know you're proud and pleased about this.
Oh, I'm so proud of you.
You should be, you should be. It's quite an accomplishment. Councilman Bazillo?
Yeah, I was also at Shop with a Cop, and I was not amazed, because I've seen it every year I've been there, but how the kids love to play with your sirens as we were leaving, you know, City Hall. So, you know, just the smiles on their face, especially when Santa showed up, says it all, for all the great work you guys do in the community. So, again, thank you. I know Wally had a lot to do with putting some of that stuff together as well. So, again, thanks staff, South Dakota Police, all for putting on, again, another fantastic thing. And somebody else probably will talk about the employees' celebration, but I'll share that for, pass that on to somebody else.
Councilmember Stip?
Thanks, Mayor. Unfortunately, I was out of town for the Shop with a Cop, so I missed that one another year. But I did attend the Valley Metro Board of Directors meeting, very, very long session. And I, I think the, the agenda went out to everybody in last week's report, but Valley Metro is celebrating the 10th year of Light Rail at the end of this month, the large celebration down at Talking Stick Arena in Phoenix. But things are, things are progressing. Discussion about the future of public transportation here in the West Valley, I think is going to be a very interesting conversation in the next 18 months as we move forward.
Thank you. Councilman Lortano?
I, I want to thank both the chiefs for the Shop with a Cop and the Philineed, because I just really think that that just shows how much we are, are as a community. In addition, I attended the, for Buckeye Union High School, a kind of a roundtable dealing with their learner profiles, and learned a lot about our district up there. That was very interesting. And Laura Kaden and I also were at the Gingerbread, which, Gailene, I can never say her name. Gailene did a great job. Great to see people were actually really enthused to build gingerbread houses. And I do want to say I attended the employee appreciation, and I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Holidays, a Happy New Year, and I want to tell everyone, thank you for all your hard work that you do all year round. Sometimes we don't always get to tell everybody that or tell all your staffs, because we don't maybe see them, but it is very important, and so please tell them from us if they didn't hear it, a thank you. It really is, means a lot to our citizens and to me.
Thank you for that comment. Councilman Cano?
There's a lot going on in the Goodyear art scene. In addition to the gingerbread house presentation, which was a ton of fun, there was also a reception, a fine arts reception for the Keep It in the Family Art Show.
for the Keep It in the Family Art Show. It was so well-attended. A lot of our artists and their families and just interested community members coming out and celebrating the art. And of course, we've got Mayor Selet coming up this week, so it's really quite a fun time.
Great, next? Councilwoman Hampton?
I attended the employee recognition as well, so I thought it was a great event. I liked that, it's a good, a good thing that in our culture and our management that we do that continually to recognize our employees and all the hard work they do every year. So I think the employees, they all enjoy it, and it's fun, and it's definitely a good way to give back a little bit, or at least let them know that we care about what they do. So, yeah, so I thought it was a good event. I was able to stay the whole time, but I thought it was, the part that I saw was, yeah, it was a good time. Christian did a great job. And I participated. I lost the movie thing, but I wasn't, I didn't help either, so... But yeah, it was fun. I lost, yeah, I wasn't as quick as, whittled it as quick as some of those other guys were. So, but yeah, it was fun, so, yeah.
Everybody finished?
All right, I just, I attended the Sun Corridor Transportation Summit, and I'm sure our city manager will add more to that, so I'm not gonna go further than that. And the gingerbread, I had to go early on to. I'll vote on that. It's always, always a little bit difficult. They're all good, you know? I wanna get them all first. Anyway, I do want, I wanna report to you. Last week, I attended the White Tank Mountain Conservancy Annual Advisory Committee Meeting in Buckeye. So they asked me to update you and keep you aware of what's going on. So Todd Hornbeck and Les Myers, and Les Myers used to be on my City Center Committee, so he's still involved in a lot of things. And they provided an overview of the accomplishments over the last two years, along with the leadership team. And each member of the committee is truly dedicated to safety and conservancy progress. The White Tank Mountain Conservancy won $10,000 grant from Cox Heroes, and they have over, and this is amazing.